You're getting all worked up, bro.
Where's that door at? This is the tower.
All right, go ahead and hit okay on that. Can you unmute your microphone? That's good, now go to record. Are you recording?
This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, Mr. Yezel, it is Bruce has been playing your part for about fifteen minutes. Anything reported, any suspected buyers in the facility, their prior office or?
Are y'all gonna make a quick exit, or what, what, what's the plan here? Everybody standing up, trying to cut down on the calories for the pledge, or what? Brian got you riled up, I mean, is that it? All right. Y'all ready down there? All right.
Let's call the board supervisors, meeting to order, as always, let's start with the pledge of allegiance and amicus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Um, we do have a quorum, we do need to adopt an agenda. Understand, we need to add a consent item, and that is, I, I'm hoping the final change order to be paid uh, for the admin complex.
Yes, sir.
And let's make that number five. And then, the sheriff is working on some things, so we need to pull off actual number five, the Lexi pole sheriff's office. So five will be part of the consent agenda, and that's the change order for admin complex. And then, pull the advertised number five off. We do have a whole slew of things to go through in public, or in closed session. Um, anybody else have anything we need to add to the agenda? Anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion's made and seconded, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signal five saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Public comment. Public comment. The door is unlocked, right? All right, just checking, just checking. All right, no public comment now, we'll do some public comment here in a little bit. Livingston, they're not flowing in on the, uh, all the fun stuff, right? Oh, yeah, I doubt that. No special appearances this evening, consent agenda, we have minutes from nine fourteen twenty-one. We have a, a bill for ten thousand eight twenty-six, which is an elevator motor replacement. Um, we've got a bill for a chiller compressor replacement, labor at the courthouse. We've got another one at the courthouse, apparently, all of them go, have gone bad, several, several. Uh, good. Um, and then we've got this change order that was added late. The total on this change order, I believe, is... That's not it. It's a total of sixteen thousand three seventy-three, I think it's sixty-nine. So that is what it is. Um, anybody have questions, comments, thoughts, y'all want to do on these five items?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Motion's made and seconded, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signal five saying aye. Constitutional officers, county departments, committees, and organizations, anybody have anything that they want to add, throw into the pot this evening? Uh, yeah, you gotta go to, you gotta go to that thing, micro. That's correct. No, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, give you a update, I was out of town at the first meeting. And so, uh, PPTRA for this year on vehicles, um, is at twenty-nine point six-four percent, uh, which is down from thirty-two last year, thirty-two point eight last year. Just that, most of that has to do with the increased value in veh- vehicles. Uh, we had an increase in the number of vehicles as well, but, um, I'll, I'll give a little overview on buying values of vehicles increased here in just a second. Assessed value went up, uh, about eleven million dollars, um, in, in overall personal property. You know, that's the, the grand total, which was eleven point six-one percent increase. I didn't get this stuff to Jonathan in time, so anybody that wants this information, I will forward this to Jonathan, um, later, and just he can disperse it to you guys, if you're really worried about, or would like to dig down into some of these numbers. But again, eleven percent increase, the majority of that is attributed to the vehicle valuation having such an impact on, on that. You know, boats and RVs had a, a pretty big increase, I'm gonna attribute that to, to COVID as well. I just feel like we had, the count was up and the value was up, I think people just, just were able to buy those. The, the only real number that, that we saw a, a general decrease in was merchants' capital, so inventory. Again, I think that's COVID related, I think the businesses, a- and we know the bigger bus, largest, larger businesses in Madison, I think they just didn't have the inventory on their shelves, um, come January one, so that, that number you'll see dropped twenty-three percent. You know, those are really the only big impacts, but again, um, that was definitely made up for in the valuation of vehicles, a- and really the valuation of everything, uh, we saw increase. So, you know, the tax amount grew about five hundred thousand, um, you know, and that's just, again, we saw that eleven, or fourteen percent specifically on vehicles, um, in, in valuation increases. But again, they, uh, I put, or I've given Stephanie an insert to put in the, uh, in the bills that will explain. People that have newer vehicles are gonna see, typically, you would, uh, generally see a decrease or depreciation in the value of the vehicle. However, um, I would say two thousand sixteen and newer vehicles, you may see a increase in the value of your vehicle. And this is a general statement, I mean, there might be some, um, two thousand fourteen diesels that you might see increase it, but, but we did see, based on the amount of inventory that was on dealers' lots, um, we saw used car vehicles' valuations go up. And, and we use average trade-in value, um, but all, no matter what classification you use, um, they all went up. And that's based on NADA. What's the word I'm looking for? Analysis, there we go, thank you. But, but we saw, you know, Kelly Blue Book, all of them saw those increases, it doesn't matter. But, everybody across the state, as far as localities, they use NADA. Any questions that anybody has?
Anybody got anything, Bron?
Real quick, that eleven million assessed value went up eleven million, that's real estate and real property?
No, that's just personal property.
That's just, I mean...
Or, or personal property and merchants' capital. Those lines of, of business.
I just have one thing, is it worth mentioning, I know you and I spoke, sir, about how little we get now for the tax relief? I know that was a popular program when Governor Gilmore, but I think that percentages went down?
Right, so that, that's the twenty-nine percent now, it was thirty-two percent. It just keeps getting smaller as the amount of vehicles in the county goes up, and then, when you have the, the actual value of the vehicle go up, that hits it a little harder. But we get just over a million dollars for the tax relief qualifying vehicles. So those are personal vehicles, not, not business vehicles, that, that get that relief. And again, it's dropped to twenty-nine percent, twenty-nine and a half.
Other questions for Bron?
Mike Bron.
All right, just let me know if you got any questions.
Um, anybody else? All right, moving on. No old business, let's go to new business, and let's start with deputy bonuses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm actually gonna have Alan throw up the ARPA plan, because it's easier to kind of pull out the deputy bonus portion, uh, for discussion. Um, and I do have handout as, as well, this was a late ad, we were finalizing some things, so. The county, just some background, was awarded, uh, a total of two million five hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars in ARPA funds. We have received, half of those, I believe, are located down at the treasurer's office. Um, but there has been no official board action of how, um, you wish to, to spend those funds. So, this is a draft plan, um, for you to consider here tonight. Uh, as you know, the broadband initiative Firefly, which was passed via a resolution by the board of supervisors, uh, accounts for about two million five hundred and sixty-some thousand of a local match. Again, it did not require you to local match with ARPA, but I be, believe that's our biggest pot of money that's not spoken for, that's not servicing debt. So, as far as deputy bonuses are concerned, um, the comp board, and this was a requirement from the General Assembly, signed into law via the budget bill from the governor. Uh, it required that all comp board positions, or in this case sworn deputies, uh, receive a one-time three thousand dollar bonus, plus the FICA, which is an additional two hundred and thirty dollars. Um, we have twelve comp board positions. The good news is, um, because we are considering just full-time positions, but I'm speaking to the comp board right now. Those are reimbursable by the state, I found out that the state has its own ARPA funding they've got from the Fed, so it's good they have pots of money too. Um, so, in discussions with the sheriff's office, um, they will utilize FY twenty-two funding. However, when the comp board reimbursed, that monies will land down at the treasurer, we will bring back to the board a supplemental appropriation, so you can move that thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars back over to the sheriff's department's, uh, budget, so we're keeping him whole. So, the comp board position is a must, we have no flexibility, we've had conversations between the sheriff's department, myself, we've asked the state, do we have to take the money? Do we have, I mean physically, do we have to take it, the answer is, yes, you have to take it. So, and that has to be paid out by November the first, so I definitely suggest or recommend the board approve that here tonight. Um, but sticking with deputy bonuses, um, we, we just had some internal discussions, it's never an easy thing when the state, again, the state put this on us, they do the same thing with standard of quality teachers, with teachers, it, it pits one against the other. But we kind of looked at it as the language talked about full-time positions, so we kept with the spirit of that request. And the bottom number you see that says non-comp board positions, that's eleven full-time positions, that is not reimbursed by the comp board. So, before you tonight, what I'd like for you to consider is, or I recommend for approval, uh, for deputy bonuses, and to be approved, but it will be approved in the avenue of the thirty-eight seven fifty-four out of FY twenty-two sheriff's department budget to be reimbursed by the comp board. And the second part of the deputy bonus award or approval, excuse me, uh, would come from our ARPA. Um, I put this up before, because this is part of the ARPA plan, which we'll go into next for your consideration. So this is a total of twenty-three full-time positions, twelve are comp board that are refunded, that's that thirty-eight seven fifty-four number. The other eleven for thirty-five five thirty would be charged to the ARPA funds. Any questions, Mr. Chairman, or members of the board?
Anybody have any questions on this?
I'd like to hear from the sheriff, what, what does the sheriff advocate that we do here?
I'm requesting that the, um, board takes care of the other part, how do you have two people working side by side? And this, you know, this is the comp board, we have no control what the comp board does. We really don't, and this is how, side by side, one is entitled to three thousand dollars, but one is not. And with this funding, I think it's well spent, as you know, um, we just lost a deaf the other day. More paid. And we've been applying, we, we haven't had a person over six months that even applied for a deafish position. It's not just us, it's everywhere, so this is a small way of keeping people that we have here in the camp. That's what I'm requesting, and hopefully the board will approve tonight, thank you. Any questions, sorry?
Well, yeah, Eric, the only reason I wanted to hear from you is, I mean, if there were discussions as to whether we had to take this money or not at all, that confused me a little bit, you know?
And I, and we discussed this with, uh, Mr. Weekly and Troy, we were actually gonna give our bonuses up, give to somebody that wasn't in time to do it, but we linked, found out by his communication with Richmond, we couldn't do that. We was gonna give our bonus up, give to somebody else that needs more than we did. And we couldn't do that.
Right. All right, so essentially, it sounds like...
I have some hard feelings. Um, I don't, I don't have any problem with anybody getting a bonus, what I have a problem with is, the convoy would says you have to give these bonuses to comp deputies, I understand that. My question is, what do you do about giving Brian, or Stephanie, or Roger, or the rescue squad? I mean, you, we can't continue, it's favoritism, I, I, I'm sorry, any way you look at it, you're favoring one group over the other. So I, I have a problem with that.
Wasn't this specifically for police officers correctional?
Yeah.
There was specific language.
It was specific language to sworn deputies, and it also includes, we're not in charge of the jails, we're a member of the jail. But it also, they having to do the same thing. Other localities, Culpeper, our neighbor, Orange County is the same thing, they're looking at keeping them whole, but they're staying with the, the spirit, if you will, of law enforcement, because that's what the governor's office is saying. For the sworn positions, that's why we stuck with this, we didn't go beyond. Quite frankly, I've had some discussions with our other core responder team, so they understand, so there's no blackballing or, or surprises. Sure, I'm sure everyone would like to have it, but we're trying to stick with the spirit, because if we don't, there is no where does this stop? But I will say, to, to speak to the sheriff, it, it could be viewed as a way of, of retaining to our bonus appreciation. Law enforcement's been through a lot in the last couple of years, nationally and locally. But in looking at other counties' ARPA spending plans, they were, they received a lot more funding, they were doing some retention for either EMS or, or deputies. So, you can look at it that way if you want, but we stuck with the spirit, which was the, uh, law enforcement component.
May I also have comments on this? I do think it, it, it seemed crazy that Richmond, one mandates that we give it to the constitutional, or the constitutionally sworn deputies, uh, in law enforcement, and then just kind of leaves everybody else out to hang, it seems irresponsible. I do think, though, that just to... I think we've got to give the bonuses to all law enforcement and just be done with this one. It is something that, I think this board has gone out, and we've tried to cater to pretty much every department, doing what I think is the right thing. But this is one that, there's not a whole heck of a lot of options, and that's a shame. What's... I think that we need to, I think that we need to do the ARPA plan prior to doing the bonus vote. Somebody, does anybody have any questions on the ARPA plan? Jonathan, you have anything else you'd like to add on the ARPA plan, it's fairly simplistic?
I, I don't, it's very simplistic, so I'm, I'm sorry, there's not a lot of grandiose to it, but it is what it is. What, what this does allow, though, keep in mind, the broadband or the Firefly initiative was about two point five six, so this, by using the comp fund, uh, or the comp board reimbursement strategy, it only leaves you about twenty-three thousand to come up with in the future to, to put towards a local match. And we know that project takes three years at a minimum, there's court challenges and other jurisdictions, so I think we'll be fine to cover that. But again, these are the only two areas that I've heard so far in my short time here, I know Firefly was a big lift. Trying to do that at the local level without ARPA, probably wouldn't happen or not to this magnitude. But again, these are recommendations, uh, if there are other things you like that ARPA monies consider for, please identify, but this is for your consideration, this is a draft, and I'm recommending to the board tonight.
Anybody have questions on this ARPA plan? What, what's the board going to do on the ARPA plan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve the ARPA plan as presented. Do we need to specifically talk about the broadband Firefly first?
Um, unless you choose to, if you want to make the motion to approve the ARPA plans presented for, as presented should cover it all. Mr. Gregg, any comments, sir? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion's made and seconded, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signal five saying aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, now deputy bonuses. Thirty-eight, thirty-eight seven fifty-four will be reimbursed to the state.
To the, to the, to the sheriff's office, yes.
Thirty-five five thirty that we are using from the ARPA plan, uh, will not be reimbursed. So, that's where we're at. What y'all want to do on the bonuses, I do think we need to do a vote on this one too.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve deputy bonuses for all comp board positions and non-comp board positions totaling seventy-four thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Is that, is that just full-time?
Oh, do I need specifically, for all full-time, for only full-time positions?
All right.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signal five saying aye. Opposed? There you go. All right. Hurt and profit parking lot study. Mr. Weekly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, um, in your packet, you had the hurt and profit study. The board approved of this study, it looked at both school... It's looked at school sites and county sites, but it's beyond parking lots, I would call it parking lots and travel lanes or travel areas, if you will. It's a pretty big comprehensive list. Uh, I had the opportunity to meet with Superintendent Graham, to have some discussion of what the schools would identify as their priorities, utilizing the numbering that's under school sites. Um, I sent that to all board members last week, just to give you a, a flavor of what they were looking for. This is something that, to my knowledge, that the board of supervisors hasn't really discussed of what you would like to do. In reviewing this wonderful, uh, review of lots, I think a lot of it is things that we know, especially on the school side. But I don't have anything that pops up front to please, you know, foreign supervisors do right away. I think my recommendation is a proper approach, that you have a joint CIP committee. As traditionally, these type of committees review, and they bring a recommendation back to the full body that they're a member of. So, I really wanted to start the discussion, wanted you to have the information if you haven't received it prior. But then I can get some direction, either when this, if you choose to push this to the CIP committee for county site review and recommendations, and then have CIP members come back to the board, full board, and make a recommendation to give me direction. I would encourage, if there's any consideration of, of projects, county or schools, let's put a dollar sign behind it, let's, let's seek some, some quotes or estimates, that there's not a lot. I mean, I'm sure you can use this packet to put out there to obtain quotes, I wouldn't suggest spending a lot of dollars, because it's not, with all due respect, Mr. Yezel, it's not engineering, we're looking for it this time, they, they've shown that, people can go out there, but just give us a, a generalized idea. Because if you want to put that in your CIP plan, you need to know the amount, and how many years of funding it would take to, to complete the project you, you may outline for us to take on. So, my recommendation is for the board to kick this to the joint CIP committee, have those members come back with the recommendation.
It's almost everything.
Well, I mean, it, it is everything, and that was the whole idea, was to get, to get a broad assessment of where we're at. I, I look at it super simplistically. All of us drive through all of these parking lots on a regular basis. I don't see a whole lot of ours that are breaking down at some ridiculous rate, um, and we're, we're real good at spending some money. I'd rather, I'd prefer to kind of back off on some of the county sites personally. The one that I do think that in, I agree with Mr. Weekly's, uh, direction, it, it should go to CIP. The one that is kind of higher on my list, and I think that maybe we can use bond proceeds or some, is to finish the, or to finish the project at the primary school. We intentionally postponed sidewalk work, curb work, parking lot work, on the basis that they came back and said there was a lot of undermining and needed to do some testing. That's one that I can kind of, I think, kind of get behind. The high school, even though they shored up the backside of that parking lot, it may need a little bit of work. But I just can't see spending several million dollars on parking lots and roads, to be a good use of funds.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we do have our facilities maintenance manager tonight, he sees a, a lot of these sites, I don't know if you'd like to ask any questions of him, but, you know, he sees our lots on a regular basis, so.
Roger.
The social services lot does need to be...
Good job, Mr. Weekly. You were getting thanked for a buck.
We're just trying to have active minutes, so we're not trying to make it painful for everybody, but...
Yes, sir. The social services lot does actually need to be redone. I think the last time that was paved was... By looking by the guy from S.O. Williamson, he said Leroy Berry was the last one to pave that lot, so that was probably back in the sixties. So that lot is in pretty bad shape. It does need to be milled and paved to the curb. These other lots, I had, I have had quotes on patching some spots. And that's pretty much, we don't need the whole lots paved, and a lot of them. We just need some spots where water stands. They need to be leveled, sort of water runoff of them. That's what, that's what messes your pavement up the most, is having these spots where the water stands. Gets in the crack, it freezes, expands, tips the pavement. But I did have, I did have some of it done. We've had some of it repaired, but there's other, there's other parts of it. And they didn't recommend doing the whole lot. They just recommended doing spots where it was bad. I mean, we don't, we don't, we don't need to spend money where we don't have to, as far as paving whole lots. We just don't need it. But the social services lot is the bad, is the worst lot. It has, it has some places in it and everything, so.
Mr. Chairman, with hearing that, thank you, Mr. Berry. Maybe it's more appropriate that Roger and I work together, we'll develop a list ahead. If you choose to kick this to the CIP committee, we'll send that out to all board members here, but the CIP members could take that over, if you'd like that, sir.
We're all fine.
Yeah, I was, and looking through that, I was in on it, you know, with the school, when we decided to do this whole thing, the whole study. So Roger, as I recall, there are issues. One of the critical ones is the primary school, because of the way the sidewalks and the pavement are funneling water back under the foundation, as an example, right?
I don't have anything about that one.
That was... That part is correct, it's just they didn't include this in the study, Mr. Yow.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But any, any of them, that's a priority, I think, is anywhere that we have water that's funneling back towards a foundation. Obviously, we should take a look at it. Are there...
We don't, we don't have any of those.
We don't have that?
I don't know.
Just at the primary school? Okay, good.
But we've got, we just have spots where water stands, and then the freezing, and the falling, just deteriorates the pavement.
Yeah, okay. That was the issue at the primary school.
Why don't Jonathan and Roger come up with a list of where they think priorities are?
And I can go back and look at my notes. I've got, I've got quotes for fixing. I had two people come give me quotes on fixing these spots. And I did have some of them done.
And maybe that's the direction we can use to mitigate some of the costs. Does that work for everybody? Have it go in front of CIP with the list, and y'all recommend, and then we can proceed from there? I mean, I'm with them on the primary school. I think you have some issues. Other ones? What are you going to do? Right, move on. Anybody else got anything for Roger? All right. Come up with a list. Good. Boy, we never really thought that we would see this. And I feel like we should give Ms. Frye back for this, honestly. Is CPMT appointment. We have an applicant, Dana Rexrode. Rod? Everybody knows her?
I, if, and I don't mean to put her on the spot. I think, Ms. Hoffman, are you on the CPMT?
Yeah.
It's my understanding that the CPMT folks approved this person, but it does need board of supervisor approval. So this is a recommendation coming from the CPMT board.
I'm super hesitant to ask any more questions in case she withdraws. Uh...
Good plan.
Uh, I don't see, I mean, we've been lucky for this person for a substantial period of time. We all, y'all have questions, comments? Please don't scare her. What do y'all want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Dana Rexrode for CPMT appointment.
Second?
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? Alan, are you, do we have a whole lot of other outstanding committees and organizations that we're missing people on?
So we can bring that back as a, actually, I am at your first business, because I do also owe you any recommended committees. The board said, review the list at the prior administrator committee assignments, and bring back some recommendations. So we'll take that as a staff item, bring that back to you, tackle any vacancies, and also any recommendations from our point.
Yeah. Do that. Anybody got anything else on this one? All right. Information and correspondence?
I have a few, unless you'd like for board members to go first, sir?
Go ahead, Jonathan.
So first off, I have some follow-up from VDOT. I forwarded this email to you all, I believe it was late Friday, or maybe Monday. I'm just going to go down the list here. So Route 15, we went back to them with the request that we need some additional assistance. We appreciate them clearing vegetation along Route 15 to make the flashing intersection signs more visible. They were also planning on adding rumble strips for the stop sign locations for the secondary roads. But we put that request out there again about rumble strips, because I realize the original engineering component, but there is value to being able to hear traffic. So they said, after another review and multiple discussions, we have decided to place transverse rumble strips on Route 15 in advance of the intersection. We will be adding stop bars and rumble strips on the side streets as well as edge line and center line puppy tracks on Route 15th intersection. That's their words and not mine. I'm assuming the puppy tracks is where they grade. That little line, if you get off, it makes that noise in the center lane or on the shoulders. But the good news is, I appreciate them taking another look, putting rumble strips. Because unless they're going to get rid of this sight distance issue, which is the 15 North approach, at least they're going to give some rumble strip. So I'm not sure if the board is satisfied, if you'd like me to go back with more, but that's the current situation.
Troy, is that right about the puppy prints? I thought you were the man to ask.
So at the Pratt's intersection of 230 and 231, they are in the process of ordering two solar flashing stop signs for the stop at 231 northbound. They reviewed in the field again, determined that because the stop sign on the right-hand side is not easily visible, installing a flashing stop sign on the left should also be installed for increased visibility. It says at the last board meeting, there seemed to be interest in revisiting the location, or they're revisiting this area for a smart scale project. I'd like her to schedule a meeting with the planner. So really, for that, I am looking at the direction of the board. Is this something you want to go back into smart scale for them to consider? Got you. I figured as much, but I need your direction, because you're pointing funds for them, so I will take that back as a recommendation. Race Ground Road Speed Study is still in progress, and we'll get back to the resident and the board when we have that. And Twymans Mill Speed Study is complete, but it has not been signed and sealed, meaning verified. On another matter, and we'll probably, Alan should put this up on our website, and I can give this over to the press as well. But we officially heard from the U.S. Board on Geographic Names, that at the September the 9th, 2021 meeting, this is the board that looks at tributary and other renaming. As you may recall, the Board of Supervisors passed a resolution supporting the renaming of Malata Run. The decision has came back from this U.S. Board on Geographic Names, approving the name change of Malata Run to officially pass Run. I've been in contact with VDOT. I've been told they're the ones that handle the signs. They're going to try to take care of that soon, but their materials are also delayed, as many other things. But that request has been made to VDOT, so we hope to have those signs changed and in place soon. But that is the recent decision. And Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for information. Other than, did you want to touch base on the project manager kickoff, or?
Yeah, I will.
Sheriff?
I just have a brief question for Mr. Weekly. I've been sitting down at Pratt's in the mornings.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, Sheriff. We're going to get probably another stand.
We're going to have to get another, we're going to have to get another...
Eric's lost four pounds tonight.
I've been sitting down at Pratt's in the mornings, and it's pretty much total chaos. I know we had a discussion with VDOT back in late August. Did he give you a timeframe of when they're going to put strips or the signs up? And we're two months into school, and nothing's there yet. That's my only question. Thank you.
So Sheriff, the answer is, they have not, but I will get on that tomorrow. And as soon as I have an answer, I'll report back to you, sir, and the board. I know we've been asking for some time. We even asked for new rumble strips. They felt initially what was in place is still sufficient. You can drive by there and see that a lot of that marking or strip, if you will, has been ate up by vehicle travel. So we'll keep pushing that, but I do not have a timetable while we get that, sir.
No, you're good.
Okay, yeah, so this morning, we... We had the opportunity to introduce Tom Char. He's going to be our project manager for the ERP system. Eric Morrow, who's been on board for a couple of months now. It was, under the circumstances, no, really no way for him to be the PM and the subject matter expert. And he has a lot of Tyler Munis experience, so it made more sense for him to stay on board as the subject matter expert. But Tom Char works, he's done, he's got 25 years' experience in this. And, and the other reason we looked at this, which we approved last time, but you need a PM that's, that's without the burden of a day job, you know? So all these guys, you know, Brian and Steph, I mean, the whole, the whole crew, they have their day jobs. So we really needed somebody from the outside to take that. So everyone was introduced, and what we're doing is, and everybody was on the call today, be it department heads or constitutional officers, is going to call Tom Char, set up the time to speak to him one-on-one, let him know where they are with things. And then Tom Char's going to come in, and probably around the 8th of October, and be here for a day or two, and meet everybody face-to-face. So I think it went real well.
Where's he coming out of?
He's Loudoun County. So he and Mr. Frye could carpool. So, and then the other thing I want to say is, the Rapid Hand River Basin Commission met at Graves Mountain Lodge. See, what's today? Tuesday?
Rainy Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah. So the big item on the Rapid Hand, on the commission's agenda that day was eye flow. The eye flow gauges that they put in the rivers to gauge water flow and be able to predict floods and all that kind of stuff. And while they were talking about it, it is just horrible. It is dumping buckets of water outside. So they go, unfortunately, we don't have an eye flow gauge right out there in the Rose River to see whether we can get back across the causeway from the lodge. I told Jimmy Graves, he'd know exactly how much rain it would take to get over that causeway. But I had a chance to, you know, to introduce Jonathan, which he had been on that commission before, so a lot of them already knew him, so that was the big thing.
Our eye flow equipment was currently down, so we gave that to VDM for them to investigate. So we have our weather alert, or I should say, river monitoring available, so I'll provide a status update.
We have the eye flow technology in place.
We do? So some of the equipment is... One is at the Robinson, and I believe the other is on the Rapid Hand.
So Robinson, right down here, and the Rapid Hand, I think is at the Green County line.
I believe that will may actually be the other county. I think that may be Orange Madison.
Oh, well, no, Orange Madison.
But we're going to report back when those are back online. They actually stopped by Brian's office, but Brian is always busy, as you know, but it was good, VDM was there. That's who has to be on it. And they're going to report back. Hopefully, parts are available, so we don't have to seek money. When I said on that commission prior, we were ahead of the game. That's why I never brought a request of funds to the board of supervisors. Others put in monies from their localities to stand up these systems. So hopefully, parts are still available, and we'll get up and go on and do a lot of business.
Good. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Anybody else got anything? Public comment? Public comment? Lowingson?
Nothing flowing in.
Real bummer. All right. Now, Mr. Carpenter? Yeah? Anything going on in the planning commission you want to speak about? Yeah, if you're not, Sean Gregg's going to wave at you.
We'll eventually get another podium.
What? Oh, yeah.
Right now, we're still dealing with basically the same two things. The review of the large-scale solar facility ordinance was basically complete, but at the workshop meeting, we did not have hard copy in front of us. And there were still several questions that were raised there. So at the, we hope to have that complete for the joint meeting in October, for the planning commission to consider. The event permit ordinance and associated topics was presented, was discussed quite a bit at the workshop, and sent back for some clarification and cleaning it up a little bit. And so at the, we plan to have that also ready to, for the planning commission to vote on and present to you guys at the, at the joint meeting in October. Otherwise, we're pretty much in the same place we were last time. Thank you.
Fairly the question?
Yeah, please. Hey, Steve?
Sure.
So I thought that Mr. Nichols had a couple of good points, which I didn't want to make sure you guys are looking, are checking out. When he said, ask if a tree from his property fell over onto the, onto the solar panels, you know, who's, who's responsible for that? I thought that was a pretty good point. And then, you know, when you were talking, and number two, the setbacks where he was talking about, perhaps you should consider 350 or some other, maybe it shouldn't be as a solid setback for the whole perimeter. Maybe we should give ourselves leeway with, say, setbacks, 100 here, but it really needs to be 250 there or 300 there. That's, that's what I heard from Mr. Nichols that night, and I just, I like that tone of voice.
Yeah, well, I can't really speak for a phase committee, but... Yeah, and actually, that, the, especially the damage to the equipment question, that I have had questions from several other people about that, in terms of storm damage potential and things like that. Again, I, from what I know about some of this, there is a good possibility that the government requirement, the state regulations and federal regulations, dealing with wind load, snow load, things like that, they probably already have to deal with that. The particular question about the 100-foot tree falling over the fence. That's a very tall tree, yes. The other thing that several people brought up during the discussion is the, that particular border is a small flood plain. And it's unlikely that they would be able to put their solar arrays that close to the, you know, even within 100 feet. There's, it's unlikely they can get that close because of the flood plain. They've already told us that they cannot locate these in flood plains and marshes and low-lying areas and things like that. Some of that... Some, some of that has been discussed, yes.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Mr. Carpenter? Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I will mention, this is kind of prelude, I may be stealing some of Liggins' thunder, but Tracy, Liggins and myself did meet with Mr. Lamar and Manier, his town attorney. Manier, thanks. Site? Okay. To discuss, you know, this UDA possibility. It's my understanding that Liggins is going to bring that to the planning commission for consideration. The town is looking at a request, should we amend our comp plan? That's a discussion that the, the PC should review and provide input. And actually, you already talked about density areas for a town anyway, it makes sense, but that will be coming up. It looks like it's just an avenue to get sidewalks and, and grant funding for those purposes and others. I don't think it's a bad thing, but I want to take an opportunity as the planning commission's rep or liaison and the board of supervisors that, that may be coming up in the next couple of months. So that's a follow-up to, Mr. Yow, I think you informed us. I received the letter and we had that formal meeting, and that's the request. So that will come from the PC first and then to you for consideration.
Have a search off plan? Yes, I believe, I don't, I'm not positive, but I'm pretty sure they did.
I'm pretty sure they did as well.
All right. We will see. All right. Anything else? We do have a lot of closed session stuff. Ms. Hoffman?
I move that the board convene a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Sections two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight five for discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities to, to, into the community. Two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight seven for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where citizens, consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. Two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight six for discussion or consideration of investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved where it may publicly initially the financial interest of the government entity would be adversely affected. Two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight one for discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment. Two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight three for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. We are in closed session, thank you all.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Maybe, yeah. Yeah.